No one got blown away on their way here. I was thinking about like the lacrosse tournament, the ultimate frisbee tournament. Did those tennis balls stay where they were supposed to go? Kate just came from a match and I bet it was pretty crazy out there.
Yeah.
Adjustments to the agenda. I'm just going to strike 5.2.2, which is the award bid for the CVU metal shop renovation. And I think everybody, Jean passed out the CCS Quonset hut removal bid. Does anyone else have any adjustments to the agenda? Audience and communications looking pretty sparse. Okay, actually before we get started with discussion matters, I, this is Kyle's last meeting. He didn't want to stay around for a fifth year of high school. Not sure why.
His parents have to pay extra.
Save some money.
Yeah, freshman in college, PG year at CVU.
Another year on the board.
I just wanted to say it has been a real pleasure having you here on the board, listening to your input, going to the student groups and having you represent the board at the student groups. You've been a great asset and we're going to really miss you, but probably not as much as you'll miss us. Please remember us on a Tuesday night sometime in like October.
Don't tie in your dorm room.
So just a little token of our. I wonder if our past student reps ever think about serving on a board after.
You know what? I can't remember Hobart. We did get a note from somebody once who did say, "I am now doing this," and it was because of my time on the board. So I'm trying to think who the student was. Sandy, that ring a bell?
It was some kind of board service. I don't know if it was a school board, but it was some kind of board.
Right. It was serving on a board somewhere. Might have been Jonathan Bateman. Does that sound familiar? I don't know. But it was a.
Okay, so we're on to 4.1, discussion matters, board work sessions. So I just, it seemed like when we, when the retreat was being planned, it was a full day. It was a lot to digest. Everybody kind of digests it at different rates. And so I thought that it would be appropriate to come back after a couple of days when we've all kind of had a chance to stop and think about it. And I apologize, Kate and Cottle, because you weren't at the retreat, but you'll hear this kind of, some of our recap of it. Kind of what gelled with you and your thoughts about work plans and goals for next year for the board? Just as a reminder, this usually was done, I think, at the end of the treat, retreat, little nuggets would come out and then Elaine and Dave or Elaine and myself sit with, sit together this summer and come up with the overall work plan. But this year, we're doing it on a separate night. And I also just wanted to provide a little bit of context for next year because I'm, it always seems to me that as, as we go through the year, we start off, we're running great, and then we get stuck. Not stuck, but we get interrupted with budget. And then, and then we.
We get interrupted by our number one task at the board. We can't understand.
Yeah, really. You don't even have to go over it.
Yep. Piece of cake. But it was, so I actually took out our, I took out the calendar and I think as we start talking about lessons from the retreat and what we want to do next year, if you kind of think about our year in thirds, so we typically have three meetings, then we have budget, then we have four meetings after that. But one of the things maybe to put in the back of your head is that, that meeting in February, we actually could come back as, and do like a half day retreat or something more, not just trying to pick up where we left off, but actually try and make that piece a little bit more meaningful. Because then I feel like we're throwing everything at the end of the year and it just becomes a jumble. So just something as you're thinking, if you think about next year in thirds, if that helps at all. So.
Did you just say possible, you're contemplating the concept of a half day retreat in February?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, keep in mind that like boards turn over in March, so it wouldn't be new members. It would be, could be some members that are leaving because, you know, just.
Who would want to leave this board?
I don't want to say no. I want to say yes, but, but just something to think about.
Okay, I'm going to, I'm going to rephrase what I said.
Okay.
In the way, way back of your head, think about a half a day retreat, but in the forefront, if we could think about, like feedback from the retreat. What stuck from you from the retreat? What would you like to see us pursue?
I think one of the things that was really beneficial about the retreat, we did a lot of cultural responsiveness, cultural pedagogy, diversity conversations, is developing a shared language about some of the issues and having, getting closer to having a shared vocabulary so that when we do talk about different issues as a board related to policy or budget, we're perhaps closer to understanding what we mean when we say certain words. I think that was helpful.
I also really enjoyed spending, spending time on appropriately.
I slammed my fingers on the door today, so I'm not raising my hand this whole meeting. I'm just trying to keep it above my heart. Do you have, do you have an example, Colleen? Like do you, are you referring to the equity literacy or, I'm wondering which kinds of words you're talking about, developing a shared vocabulary for or around?
I think probably just a good example, you know, a simple construct would be, if you remember the diversity wheel and where we sit on that, you know, with all of our different identities, that, that's something to be self-reflective about when we're having conversations. And I just think that that's useful as a, for example.
Okay, I didn't know if you meant like a shared vocabulary to be used in outward, like board communications and things like that, like a sort of introduction of a whole new.
I think, I think it moves in that direction, but I think that we're still, a lot of it, it's still fresh to a lot of people. Some of us have been doing this work for a long time and might have our own vocabulary, but if I were to say certain words to the group, they might mean something to me and something different to somebody else. And the more that we can have conversations and just, you know, do that check in, do I understand or can you explain something or, you know, the more that we do that, I think it's helpful for a board, particularly when we're starting to talk, you know, our role is policy, budget, hiring, good leadership, when we have those conversations or, you know, providing direction and Elaine reporting back to us what's going on in the school with training will have a better understanding of what it is that she's talking about, you know, the feedback to, for us.
Does anyone, does anyone feel like there are still words though that haven't been defined? You know, I think about, we talked about equity and it meant different things to us last year until we sat down and really wrote down, well, the VSBA actually came up with, we didn't recreate the reel of what equity meant. And I'm wondering if, if people feel like there are other words like that, like when we talk about diversity and inclusion and tolerance, are those words that have a common meaning or that we might need to better define?
I don't, I don't have the answer to that, but I will say that I really appreciated when white privilege, like the thought of what white privilege was, was simplified by like, into like one sentence during that training. Like I, I think it could be helpful to have like some very, like very straightforward, almost like we have this, you know, just sitting here right now, almost like having some words, maybe we could either, a small group could either kind of think of some words or we could like do it as a group, but it might be helpful to have like white privilege, like diversity. One thing that I was going to say that I know that I would love to be working toward is like equity literacy, like so what did that mean? Because she went over like sort of the three phases that you can be in as an organization. And like I think one of the goals we should be striving for next year is really trying to get to equity literacy so that, because I think the one thing that, well, there was quite a few things, but for me, something that really stood out was when we were talking about what we wanted our students to feel, that in some, in very many different ways, it was safety and so like being safe, having like the opportunity to thrive and flourish and do well. And so like I know that I think we should be working toward, I feel like we should be working towards equity literacy, but like also having a very clear understanding of what that is and action steps to get there, I think would be helpful.
But what else?
Just in response to your question, Len, I think, I suspect that Rebecca would say that if she had more time, that she would have been able to delve, she would have been able to delve deeper into a number of different areas related to diversity and equity and, and the, the use of language to, to ensure that we're respectfully addressing individuals who, let's say, for example, if we use the example of those who are gender non-conforming, that if we think about the process of gender identity as a continuum and not, as we talked about at our retreat, that being a binary concept, that there are a number of different terms that people self-identify to use along that continuum. And we just did not have the time available to us in the retreat to be able to, to look at that. I mean, I think one of the things that I believe we've talked a little bit about or maybe has been floating around a bit is, you know, would we have an opportunity to have a part two, let's say, with Rebecca at some later point? And hopefully that, that will be the case.
That would be a great use of another half, like a mid-half day retreat or, or something like that, like another chunk of time with Rebecca.
Well, one of the questions that I asked her was, does it make sense to have her, if we were to continue, to have her come back before we move further or should we move further and figure out what we need before we have come back? Because I kind of feel like.
Sorry.
It's okay. I don't feel anything startled. This is just my own opinion is I, I think we have a lot of work to do around diversity, inclusion, equity as it relates to our policies, because I think that's the main focus of our board, and also our budgets. But I don't feel like I have a good enough understanding of that to start, of the definitions and how to go about doing that before we just start down that path.
If I could offer just, we're never going to get there wherever there is, like, you know, there's never a goal where you can say, okay, we all get A pluses on this, we all get it, we can now, now we can start doing the policy. But I think part of our conversation from last week is that there has to be this, a little bit of forgiveness if someone misspeaks now and again. Or, you know, like Angie checking in, you know, what did you mean by something? Or, you know, we just, we need the work, there's so much work to do in this area, we just need to move forward with what we have. With what we have, knowing that we need to put the brakes on now and again, or we need to check each other, check in, or, you know, someone say, whoa, wait a minute, you know, you're going down a path that might be a little bit dangerous, whatever it might be. But I, I think that we just, we need to venture forth and start doing the work.
And I, I agree with Colleen, but I also wonder if like even in the beginning of the year, if we could have another time with Angela, I'm saying Angela because I was just looking at Angela.
Rebecca.
Rebecca, that's not right. But with Rebecca, like I think we can start moving forward, but I, I do think it could be helpful that as we're doing the work, to have another, another session with her to maybe then like, because I feel like as soon as we jump into the work, we're going to have more questions. Like I, I think just having someone that we can, you know, be tossing ideas at or like talking to and I, we are a policy board and I would, I imagine, I haven't looked at the policies that closely, but I would imagine that there's a lot of work to be done with regards to our policies to make sure that we're being equitable and thoughtful about diversity and different things. And so I think it would, it would make sense to just sort of jump in, but then at the same time, knowing that we're, we, we have a date set up with Rebecca coming up or something.
Barbara?
Yeah, you know what this made me think about was, we need to celebrate what we already have in the schools and I don't think we all are aware of what's happening in our schools. So it would be helpful to have some kind of presentation of what's happening in the schools around diversity, inclusion, and, you know, when we look about, we look at the, you know, the equity literacy framework, there is something happening. So let's celebrate it. It would be nice to have some kind of presentation to bring everybody up to speed of what's happening within our schools, because I know there are things happening.
Yep. Okay. What else?
When I think about the question of, of how the work that we did in our retreat might impact our workload in the coming year, one of the things that I was struck by was how some of the information that we received and reviewed and thought about in the afternoon really related to the morning's discussion. And one of those areas that I would pinpoint is, are the, was the demographic information related to race and ethnicity. And I was struck by the fact that in all of the categories that have, that at least from the information we were able to receive, have, those that have been surveyed, we find that 10.4% of our student population identify as being of race and ethnicity other than Jeff and I got a chance to talk a little bit about this because I noticed that amongst this long list, there was not a category for mixed, for people with mixed heritage. And he said that that would be added, that's actually coming in and will be included in the next count of, when this is surveyed again. I'm not sure when that will occur, but it, it tells me that this number of 10.4% may be somewhat depressed. It also does not take into account things like those individuals who identify as being of a religious minority, of being LGBTQ, those who identify as being gender non-conforming, and those students with lower SES. And, but if you take the existing number of 10.4%, if our total student population is 3950, that's 395 students just, just in the numbers that we currently have, that's a larger student population than what we have at Shalott Central currently. One of the things that we talked about in the work group that I was in, and I think others might have in their work groups too, is that we tend to believe in this district, sometimes I think that we have such a small number of those, of individuals of minority race and ethnicity status. And the challenge that goes along with that is that then that means that we don't necessarily have the robust policies and practices or systems in place that we might have were that to be a different perception. And so one of the things that I'm hoping for is that as you're considering the work plan for next year, that one of the things that you might reference is the, the letter that the board received in February from a group of parents. Most of those parents have children of color, but not all of those parents. I was one of those parents. There were five recommendations that were made to the board for consideration. And so my hope is that those, those recommendations will be relooked at again as the work plan is being developed.
You want the board to consider those recommendations?
I do. And, I mean, I could read quickly those recommendations if you would like.
I appreciate being reminded. I forgot about the letter.
Thank you. So number one, that the board develop a formal zero tolerance policy for acts of racism, intolerance, and hate. Number two, that the board create and fill a diversity and inclusion specialist position. Number three, that the board increase the diversity of teachers and staff throughout the CVSD district through proactive hiring practices. Number four, that the board supports the development of a parent and community diversity action team to work alongside staff and students in our schools. And finally, that the board support the idea of informed curriculum, which goes back, I think, in many respects to what you were speaking about before, Jocelyn, that we're really looking at our curriculum in our schools from kindergarten through grade 12 and seeing how well we are weaving the issues of race and ethnicity into our curriculum practices.
Thank you.
And Elaine, just to add to that, because that's why I asked for this presentation, because some of these things are already trickling in some of the schools, so they are not known to every board member or to the community. So it would be helpful to have that clear understanding of what's being done around literacy, you know, around race and inclusion and what's happening in each school.
And I think along with that, the idea, I think it's such a great idea because it would also illuminate how much sharing is going on of those resources and those ideas among staff and, and teacher personnel.
What was the, what was the act, the bill that was passed this year on racial?
It's not Act 1.
I think it might be Act 1.
It's called Act 1.
That's confusing. We have another Act 1.
Well, it's related to, I, I know it's confusing because of the other one, but there's going to be a legislative committee that will be looking for recommendations and I don't believe the committee has been formed yet.
Is this the one you're referring to?
It's, I don't know. I mean, Elaine would have heard about it through the superintendent's association.
The bill passed, yes.
Yep.
Yep. But I think you're right, Colleen, the committee hasn't been.
Hasn't been formed.
And you can go online and read the, the legislation for it and I, I could forward it to you because I've got it, I'm using it for something else, but it has the membership of the committee, where they're going to pull people from and, but I think, you know, they probably have a bunch of people identified, but there's something that we could do proactively related to, you know, like for example, the five points that Jeff suggested and, you know, Barbara's point about having a presentation, what are we already doing? But there might be an opportunity for us as a board to proactively give something back to the VSBA or, you know, fellow board members. This is what, how we're approaching it, you know, perhaps it's a subtopic at the annual VSBA meeting.
What else? I make sure I'm not, I, I feel like I should sit in this corner and then I can see everybody.
We should have a rounded, yeah, a triangle. I think also going along with the, the second half of the day, when we were going over the data, what struck me was the information that we do have or we don't have about students that are considered low SES. And I think that that's something that we should really be looking into, just like, I think it's amazing that at CVU, all kids get to take the SATs regardless of the fee, that the fee is paid for them and that they get to take the SATs, because I know that that was a barrier for a lot of people when I was in school. But I really think kind of, kind of looking at where, where all these fees can come in for things, because there's a lot of things that kiddos can be, or students, I guess, older kids probably don't want to be called kiddos, but students have the opportunity to do, but I question sometimes if all students really have the opportunity to do it, depending on if, you know, there's a fee to go on an awesome trip with a class or if a student is going to be on a sports team or play an instrument and that's an added cost to their family. Just because we know that these things can look, not only look really good, but prepare students for the future and for college. And I think trying to figure out how we can be more equitable and, and take out the need for fees or a different way of maybe addressing it.
That's, you just reminded me, I wasn't ignoring you. Erin had sent a, an email with a similar thread in it that she, she really hoped that we could look at the ability to pay and make sure that there's equity involved in that, creating truly equal access to many important opportunities, musical instruments, uniforms, equipment, travel, internships that require transportation. If these opportunities are important academically, perhaps they should be in our budget rather than rely on fundraising. So is that.
Yeah, that's, I think that's, she, because she and I had a long conversation about some of the fundraising that happens in Williston. And her and I trying to think, and Angela actually, and FAP trying to think creatively of other ways to come up with money rather than the way that we're doing it right now. But that's just one of the things that, that like really struck me in the data. I mean, there was a lot of awesome data that we were getting and like pictures with lots of questions after, but that was the part that really kind of stayed with me.
I just sent Sandy the legislation, so send that forward.
I just might say that just because this happens to be the second day of our monthly round robins where we meet with all the principals and I gathered that information around field trips specifically. So what are the fees associated with that? And what I learned in every school is that really kids with very, very few exceptions are not asked to pay anything because of the work of FAPs, of PTOs, of.
But I can, I, just as someone who's also on FAP, I can tell you right now that we're having a really, really hard time coming up with money. The general fund, which has been the main reason why most kiddos don't need to go sell product door to door, is so underfunded right now that they're actually going to be cutting out their second set of grants that they normally do in the year because the money's just not there. And we just had to turn down a kindergarten class for something that we would, like without even question would normally fund, but there's just no money for it.
And that's a second issue, right? So that's different.
Right. Absolutely.
So the issue about like can everybody go and we only go if everyone can go and there's nobody that's.
I, I agree, yeah.
And the intersection of can everybody go because we, we provide the funding and how much of it we can do, there's a big intersection there and you're facing it right now.
And I know that there, some of the people on FAP, when asked if we could fund this, was that the hope, some people I think are just a little, I don't know what the right word is, but they're just hoping that well, maybe if we can't fund it, maybe it'll open parents' eyes because at some point we just can't keep funding and funding and funding. But, but just trying to come up with other creative ways of coming up with, with money so that kiddos can be doing everything, but.
The, the fundraising, I know we're going to talk about fundraising in the fall, it's going to become a policy, it's going to be a policy committee first, naming rights in fundraising. I wasn't on the consolidation committee and I don't know if you guys talked about fundraising in the intersections between.
Yes, we did, as a matter of fact.
That is just, I mean, I talk about your equity and autonomy kind of slapping right together because each school has their own trips, their own things, and they are not equal in terms of cost. And, and I, I think it's kind of like one of those subjects we're going to have to tackle at some point, maybe.
Might be the third rail though.
Yeah.
And I say that because I have met with the, I invite anybody who's in the PTO leadership, PTO, FAP, PIE, once a year to just say, how's it going? My intentions are really like, let's learn, let's get to know each other, let's share what we're doing, right? And the first year that I did it, I heard back that like the PTO people were very nervous that what I was really trying to do was make them all the same and get into their decisions about their, how they're going to use their money and all of this, which is the furthest thing, and for me anyway, so I know boards have a different place, but for me, I am never doing that. I am really just trying to make sure that we have an opportunity to get to know each other, to hear good ideas that people have. But their organizations, I mean, they do tremendous work. This is one thing I knew as a school principal and know even more as a superintendent meeting with them. They, I don't think that they would do that level of work if somebody else is saying, oh, here are our rules, because they are from the bottom up volunteers and in service to the school. And it's an amazing, it's amazing way that like, you know, we say we want to be still it's amazing way that, like, you know, we say we want to be still community centered as, as a merged district, we don't want to get to a place that we go, oh, like, you know, school is that thing that happens over in some office someplace, and these groups are like at the heart of how you really stay connected with the community, so I only offer a caution about trying to put too many parameters about how they do their work, right? And yet, I hear what you're saying.
Well, no, 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 I'm not saying, I'm, I'm just saying, if, if our board truly believes that equity and funding means that all children need to be able to participate, that is a separate, in my mind, that's a separate conversation than, than the PTOs and the PIEs and the FAPs, because, you know, they're not funding the musical instruments, I don't think, I don't know.
Or if there's going to be a class trip to Washington DC, they're not, they're helping with buses to get kids to Echo.
Right.
For me, one thing that I would like to discuss before we have this conversation, does the board have any oversight over RBS or PTO, and what can we really...
Secondly, Elaine made a really good point, these are volunteers in the community, so in theory, they're, they're individuals from the community that are coming into one of our schools to support a cause, and we, those individuals are coming with the community's best interest, and if they live in the best interest in mind, so it's going to be different for every one of our schools, it won't be the same.
We were doing consolidation, we got very hard about that, and like Colleen said, we did just push the issue down the street, so to speak, what we, what we decided very specifically, as the old board and the consolidated board, is that this will be an issue to address with the new board when policy dictates what's going to happen, and we didn't see it was our place to start dictating what future policy would be. With that said, we, we recognized the individuality of each program and parental involvement in each community, but I would just add that when there is a difference in equity of what's available in our district for one school vis a vis another school, that's when we, as a board in a consolidated district, need to look from a policy perspective about what those funding mechanisms are and what those programs are as they relate to our students in our whole district. That was the spirit of our discussion about FAPs or PTOs and what was, what was happening.
And I, I'm thinking a bit more in terms of not oversight, but just support.
You know, would it be appropriate for the board, are there ways in which the board could or should support the various, you know, community groups, I'm thinking even something as seemingly simple as language, which is why I asked the question earlier, you know, having had the opportunity to receive this really great training with Rebecca, and whatever further work we might do with her, we might be able to offer some different language, but to speak to equity issues in the area of fundraising, and that's, that's just a very specific, maybe the answer is, like, I just join the Williston FAP and do what I can there as a person, not as a board member, I'm not sure, but we've, we, it's that sort of like, now that you know, you know.
I think I should just throw in, oh, I'm sorry, I was just going to say, certainly, we have guidelines, structures around people who are fundraising in the name of our schools, right? So I'd have to refresh what that is to be more specific, but certainly if it's something you're interested in putting on the work plan, we could develop exactly what we already have in place, and you could decide as a board if there's something more you would like to do. There is, there is two issues, right, so there is, yeah, there are two, there are two issues, one is the whole money thing, and one is the whole, to use the word, a guide, oversight, you know, and, and certainly, you wouldn't want them out saying something that you would not support in some way, so, you know, so...
Well, since we're going to have to talk about naming rights with fundraising, that would, it would kind of all flow together.
In former, in other policies we have had... And Mark, you can remind me of some of this, but certain policies we have, and criteria shall consider these particular points or guidelines.
When guidelines are developed, you mean?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
And we can make that part of policy, without actually dictating what's, what it is.
Just as a side note, Emily Pont, who is the chair of the FAP, she is open and happy to hear anyone who has any creative ideas with regards to fundraising, so when I told her that, it just became like a minor conversation that we were having there, she was like, do those gals want to get some coffee with me, because she would like love any creative idea, because she just wants to be able to fund and give as many grants as possible to Williston schools.
Has she contacted the other PTO PIE people?
You know, I honestly don't know, I don't know, she's like on top of so many things, I would assume she has, but I, I don't know.
I mean, honestly, it seems like if something in, in that realm was going to happen, that's where it would start, it would start from the ground up with the people who are already doing the work, to see where it could, where, and, yeah, I know...
That's the reason to gather them together.
You were pulling them together, but I just wondered if, if they had reached out independently.
So it seems to me we've identified for our work plan, one of the issues is to look at policies that might be applicable to goals of increasing our awareness of equity, diversity, or whatever, and identifying a few policies that we might need to tweak, so as far as like a work plan goes, it seems to me that, that might, that would fit into our domain of what we can do.
I think, you know, I think that this is a conversation, too, is, you know, where is best practice, I'm sure each school has a little bit of best practice with their PTOs or FAPs, and what can we, what information can we gather from them to help inform our decisions, because I guarantee you, if you put all them in the room, they're probably going to come up with their answer, because they're doing it.
Did you want to add?
So I just, I walked away from the retreat, and I was like, wow, Lynn only put two things on the agenda, and I was thinking about that, and I was like, I thought it was a really great idea, and I thought it was, there were two great topics, and obviously, everyone's really talking about equity literacy, it was really great to hear all the vocabulary that came out of that, and I really think it's going to help us, like, have conversations, talk to each other, and then also think about the way we do policies. The afternoon, I think, was also, I wish Jeff was here, but I think also the indicators committee, I'd like each one of those subtopics that we had in front of us, I'd love to have indicators, or Elaine, or Jeff, or somebody on staff, just really dig into as much information we can get on all of those indicators and try, and that's the, that's the role of, that's the role of the indicators committee, I think, and there, but like, get more information about how all that information is being filtered through the indicators committee, and what we as a board can learn about it, because I'm sure as with budget, as with HR, as with policy, every committee has its, its wheelhouse, and just seeing all that information was, was really great, and I found myself wanting to connect dots, but I didn't have enough information to connect dots, and I was making assumptions, so that's why, it was great to have those three hours, like, can you imagine if we sat here from six till 12 at night, talking about two different topics like that? Yeah, we wouldn't meet for two more months after that. So that was really valuable, and I think definitely the morning and definitely the evening, or the afternoon, both of those topics need to be expanded over the next year.
So are you talking about, like, looking at each of the demographics, perception?
Academic.
And then academic.
Yeah, I mean, it's easy to go straight to academic performance, and I don't necessarily want to go all the way there, but like, there were pieces of data and demographics that were kind of interesting, I didn't expect.
Yeah, I mean, and Jeff noted that earlier, so if we were able to take some of the...
And then how things actually overlapped, like...
Yeah, the disaggregation of our performance data for candid, for our students, yeah, I'm sorry.
No, I totally agree with you, exactly what you're saying.
Was there, you've mentioned a couple of things about, you know, wanting more information, Jeff, you were talking about the race and ethnicity pieces, do you feel like you, the pieces that you needed more information on, you were able to put on those charts, or after spending the weekend thinking about it, did anything else come up that says, I wish we could do more of this, or I wish we could learn more of this?
I, I really think we should compile what was on those papers, like, compile a list, and then, like, use that maybe as a jumping off point for figuring out, like, that part of the work plan, because I think, I think all, it was four groups, right, there was four of us, I think there was, all four groups each came up with similar, but then also dissimilar things that they were like catching up on each section, and I know that our group, I feel like, you know, adequately wrote, like, what our questions were, what we were hoping more of, or whatnot, and so I, I feel like it might already be there, and it's just a matter of going through it and like agreeing, like, these are the, the things that we can, we can cover in a year or whatnot.
Jeff, who's asking, Jeff?
Well, I'm, I'm still thinking about the question that you just asked, I mean, I, I really, a couple of things, one is that I've had the good fortune of having, I had a, I've, I've had a day-long training with Rebecca in the past, and so I've had the opportunity to see how she can go deeper, and have also had the opportunity to do diversity training over the years, and have participated in some of that myself at UVM in terms of giving some of that training, so it's just that, there's, there's more that we could do, I mean, I really appreciated our discussion on, on Thursday, and I particularly appreciated the fact that I felt that, it appeared that people felt free to say what was on their mind, and even to question at times some of the material that was coming forward and so forth, and I just, I feel like as a work group, it just will benefit us to think about how we can continue on, because there are deeper areas of training that, that I just think that we could benefit from, without sort of going through the list of all of what that might be, I mean, we have talked already tonight about what some of those areas might be, and, and I guess, other than that, and I, I hate to sound redundant, but I, you know, my hope is that we will use the process that we went through this spring as we were reacting to and responding to the issues of racist graffiti and, and hate speech that, that occurred here at school, and, and then being able to respond to the request to have the Black Lives Matter flag raised, all of that process, and the letter from the parents, and the training that we've just done, and my hope is that we will use all of those things as a springboard to move to the next step, which is, what are some concrete actions that we can take that then have a life, right, they go on, and they, they're in place, and we have to adhere to those things and be mindful of those things. So I, that's pretty much what, what I'm thinking about. If I can just say one other quick thing, I, one of the, one of the things that was, that was noted during our training was the expectation that our faculty and support staff will certainly continue, as they do, to adhere to the core values that we have within the district, and that certainly falls into these, to these areas of, of diversity and ethnicity awareness and, and respectful receptivity, but I think we can see both from the conversations that we were having, people are in different places of comfort with all of that, and so I'm hoping that as training is happening and continues to happen with faculty and support staff, that while we hold all of our staff and ourselves to those core values, that we also have room to be patient with the fact that some folks are, that everybody's going to be in different places with that, and have all different kinds of questions, and, and that it's, that it, the, it just seems really important that the atmosphere in those trainings and within our schools is that this is an okay place to, to be uncomfortable and to therefore raise questions, and one of the ways in which I've been able to see that process really evolve over time is that in Shellot Central School, where a program called Reading to End Racism started about seven years ago, which was born out of the diversity committee that has existed there, there was initially very understandable and well-expected discomfort from some of the teachers about this reading program, because it involved not only having members of the community come in to read about diverse topics within each of the classrooms, but to have a discussion about those issues of diversity and equity and, and racism and antisemitism, et cetera, and some teachers were concerned about, how do I manage those discussions, how am I going to do with that, and it was just, it's been an interesting process to be able to watch year by year, people grow more and more comfortable with that process, but it takes time, it's an evolution, and I, I, I think that we're in the midst of an evolution as well, and so I'm just hoping that we're patient with everybody, no matter where they are coming from, and that we can support them in that process.
Okay.
Well, when I was thinking about Rebecca and the training piece, I just want to echo
that I feel like, as we craft and revisit our policies, because the content of equity and gender and race is so dynamic, and I, I for one, welcome having somebody who is sort of on the ground with these issues in real life, sort of as a guide or shepherd as we move forward, it's, and not, in a working relationship, not a one or two time, just a training, and knowing that we're all in different places, but I feel like we as a board have an opportunity to craft policy, but Elaine has a bigger role to play as we kind of spread that policy out to the administration and the teachers and, and the rest of the staff in the school, it's, it's a long-term educational program for the professionals, and I think that someone like Rebecca, maybe not just Rebecca, would be instrumental in that, in the spirit of that, because I, we, if we are moving ourselves forward and creating policies, I don't want to be the people that are enforcing those policies in direct conflict, because they don't have the, so that's one thing, and then the other about, what else would I like to see, and specifically that demographic data, I thought, I thought the whole thing was excellent, I mean, I told you on the way out the door that it just, I could get into those details of the demographics, but what resonated for me right off the top, when we talk about diversity and inclusion, when I think about like what's happening in Shelburne right now, with this influx of homelessness and the kids, and, and the logistics of busing the kids and what's happening, and I'm like, wow, like, it's a case study in, in and of itself of what's happening in our school, it pertains to inclusion and diversity and budgeting and busing and the budget, and like all of these things that we talk about, it could, and we could see it in any one of our schools at any other time in a different, in a different form, but with similar components, so I, I think that there, that when I look at that data, there's real learning opportunities for case studies like that, that we as the board could look at, that would benefit our whole operation.
And especially like the following cohorts through years, within each demographic, all of that.
Oh, that's even a whole other part, I wasn't even talking about the student demographic, I was just talking from a management perspective, we have a group of our constituents, you know, and our people that are, are in this particular dynamic, and wow, how do we respond one as a school, and what does that mean for the principal, and what does that put on the counselors, and what does that put on the transportation people, and what does that put on the budget, what would that look like if it happened in Williston or Heinsburg, or like, there's so many different things that come into play, and right now, understandably, it's a bit reactionary, right, because you're like, whoa, kind of learning by the seat of your pants, but I think, my first question is like, wow, is, you know, is the Shelburne principal getting enough support for this, you know, I had no idea this was going on.
Well, so to flip, so, so to put it back into the board perspective, what would be the what? Like, we don't get involved in the how, right, we get to say what, so what is it that you would want to see happen, like, what is it, so when we're talking about all of the low SES, the equity, what is the what?
So the what for me would be is, if, in a, in a case study exam... Oh, what I see, so the what for me would be is, if, in a, in a case study example, the what would be, what's the take home? How did this impact, how did this particular situation on this particular year impact our particular principal in this particular school? Budgetary functionality? What could we do, this is, this is management, what could we do to better support that principal, that superintendent, our budget to, to compensate, prepare for, anticipate some of those different dynamics that we have not seen before?
And that's going to be evident in the amount of support services that are required within the school that change
Perhaps, perhaps.
Due to certain situations that some of the kids are in. Colleen?
So, you know, what if, trying to be concrete about our work role and, and moving forward and possible action, I think there's some, going back to Barbara's comment about, we kind of need to have an assessment or, I hate to use the word assessment.
Summary.
A summary, we need to know what's actually going on. Because I think about the, the letter from the parents that we received last year, one of the recommendations related to having a position that's dedicated to this work to help, as Kelly said, the shepherding, the guiding, the, being the expert on the ground. There, you know, not a lot of people that have that area of expertise. They've been building it over a number of years. So that's, you know, for example, that might be one consideration for the board, is does that become part of our budget? But before we were to leap to that direction, we need to know what expertise we have among, in our schools. And then another point that Jeff reminded us of in the letter was recruitment, active recruitment of people who look different from me, you know, who are perhaps non-white, heterosexual, whatever, middle-class background. But, you know, we need to be looking for difference within our schools and actively recruiting people. So that, those are just two examples. We talked about policy, you know, the demographics that we can ask for when we, you know, for example, the, the list of demographics, it's, it's not even matching the federal list because it does not include mixed race. You know, we need to know all of our kids and it should be aligned with federal demographics. So whenever we're looking at data, we need to have it aligned with federal. But we can ask for assessment reports based on
Longitudinal data system.
And how the state asks us to report, so, so
You can add categories.
What's, what, well, we're limited to how they're reported when they register based on those categories. So the changes that you will see to include mixed race will happen with the new data system next year.
At the state level.
Right.
So I was just trying to offer like, you know, a few concrete things we can do is, is ask for presentations or information. Explore whether or not the budget would support someone with expertise in the area. Examine our policies a little bit. Ask for data, assessment data, for example, disaggregated so that we're using the demographic data. And consider asking for a recruitment plan that's specific to recruiting for different, from the dominant culture here.
What, what is, what is the board's goal at the end of next year? As it relates to this? Because, I mean, we can come up with a gazillion different things to do.
This is a 20-year project. This is not something
But, no, 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 but what's the goal? What's the goal?
One of the things that resonated with Rebecca, I learned a lot for her retreat. I remember, you know, I had a good conversation, I mean, you did a great job explaining something to me, a question that I had. But that one little question as I was driving home made me realize how much, how many other questions I had. So one of the things that resonated with me that Rebecca said is that this isn't a, she didn't say this exactly, but this is the way that I interpreted. This isn't a task. This isn't, let's check off a box and say that we did it. This is a journey. And we have to determine what that starting point of our journey is. So what I would like to see, because we, we have to give the administration something tangible to do. We can't just, you know.
Yeah, because we don't really have much to do right now.
Yeah, so, you know, what I would like to see is, you know, a list of policies that we currently have that deals with this issues and a review of those policies and then maybe a recommendation from the policy and administration, what other policies that we need. And then, then a needs assessment to look at all the things that Rebecca and the parents, such as, you know, inclusion, person-to-person hiring practices, to determine as a board, what actions do we have to do or where, what is our current environment? Like, for me, I'm having a hard time wrapping my head around this whole thing because I don't understand what my, our current environment is.
I think as you're looking for a policy, see, my, I, my take on Rebecca is, this is not about crafting a policy for
We need to go through every policy.
We need to be thinking our thought process and sort of, and how we approach our constituency across our policy and management structure. It's not a policy. That's what we add.
Yeah, so we need to go through all of our policies. It's not a policy, but we need to make sure that we're aligned with what we want to do. And then, and then we have to have a larger discussion, how do we change the, the culture throughout, throughout the schools, starting with the principals down to the teachers and even with the volunteers, the parents who help out? And, and what does that look like and what resources do we need to get there?
I'm not, I just, I'm not frustrated. I'm just, I'm trying to, I'm trying to put this all into a, into a context of a board. Like, I, I get that this isn't, in one year, we're going to be done and let's just check off the box. I guess what I'm trying to get the board to think of is, at this meeting next year, we're going to look back over the year and we're going to be, we're going to be able to say, our goal for this year was to have a better understanding of our baseline of where we are in terms of addressing equity in the district. That could be one goal. But this is kind of where I'm thinking right now. Or two, we're all talking the same, we have a better understanding of the language, so we're all speaking the same language. Maybe I'm being too rigid.
But I just want to jump in because you guys have circled around this a little bit in your discussion, but it's really important that like before the board says, oh yeah, we have the resources, we're going to go hire a diversity coordinator, that you have charged me with working with the principals to find out what the needs are. And do they think that, and you, I've heard different people say this, but it's important we always keep that. So one goal for me would be like a deeper structural cycle for getting input from teachers and principals, all of whom will have had all the same training, to determine what are the needs? Whether we're talking about because we've got homeless or we're talking about because we need to dig a little bit deeper in one area or another? I don't think that it will work if from the top down you have the best policy in the world and like people share it nationally, but you haven't gotten the support of the people who are in the classrooms and who are leading the schools, right? So that would be a goal, to make sure that we figured out a way to get that kind of input in a way that informs the board's, the board's decision though, because policy is your work.
You know, I'm reminded, and I hate to keep going back to when Charlotte, I was on the Charlotte Board and we had all those issues. But we did training and there was a triangle. And the board's role was to learn, to listen, and at the very top was then you start to lead. You had to learn and listen first. And so I guess, this is just my opinion, but in terms of, of where we go with equity, we have a lot of learning and listening to do before we start leading and actually doing. And I think it's okay to move forward because I, I agree, you know, we could do this for 20 years and then say, okay, now I guess we have all the information, now we can start to lead. But I guess I'm just looking, I want to manage expectations across the board and so that we can let our communities not expect that all of this is going to happen immediately. Like, what are, what would be reasonable to expect at the end of next year to look back and say, okay, we, we have moved the ball forward a little bit? And I'm going to go to Angela, only because I always look at this way.
I'm just thinking about, would it be acceptable to think of this year and our goal for this year, you know, to think of this as our discovery year? There's this phrase that keeps, that's like running through my mind, I want to know what I want. When you're looking for clarity in any way, in any realm, some, that's just, I sit with that question sometimes, I want to know what I want. And I'm feeling that a little bit right now, that like, which I think is what Brendan was saying, what Elaine was saying, that like a needs assessment is a more formal way of putting it maybe. But would that be an acceptable goal for a year from now to have, to reach a year from now maybe what we're trying to reach tonight?
I want to know what I want.
I want to know what I want.
Spend a year really
Spend a year in discovery.
It's like what we did with technology five years ago, I think.
Kind of like an audit.
Yeah, it's an audit.
And what we did this spring with literacy.
Because we don't know how to spend resources unless we know where we are.
And then, you know, the goal being that at this meeting next year, we can produce a very clear set of boxes to check off or whatever have you, you know, that, that we will feel well-informed to, you know, to, to continue moving forward. I think the discovery is, is moving forward, but then, then we get to the Crafting policy or, you know, yeah, the newness. I think you need, we need time. This is all really new, I think. Maybe it's just because I'm new.
And so just in terms of structures, we will have a LEED retreat, so that's all of the administrators in the system at the beginning of August. And they, at that retreat, will decide also what's our work plan. And we share, Colt shares with everybody, here's what the board's looking at. So you can imagine how then all of a sudden this stuff can start working together and we are all on the same page, learning together and figuring out what it is we need to do and what we want.
I mean, the presentation that Jeff presented, he quoted Deming in that first slide. And Deming's thing is standardized, plan, do, act. And I heard you saying, I heard you saying what Barbara said in her first note, her first comment, which was like, let's understand what we have, let's standardize, let's understand what sort of systems we have right now. Let's, let's learn. And what was the other one on the right side? Learn and
Listen.
Learn and listen.
And then lead.
Damn, that's a really lousy one to forget. And I said, I was listening to you and I forgot the word listen. But I think that, I really like that Elaine is saying like, okay, so we're hearing this from the board and we're going to share this with Colt and, and try and get this information. I know in Shelburne, when Harbor Place and Harrington Place came in, everyone was worried about how student services were going to change. And there were different ways that conversation came out. And it's, it's like the way that conversation travels is the same way every difficult conversation starts. There's facts and there's opinions. And we want to work with facts and look at what actually happened with the influx of the, these two services that came into Shelburne. And, and I think a lot of people, you looked at that data and you said, wow, all this homelessness in Shelburne, but there's really a sort of a story behind that. And so taking that information and understanding from a demographics and from student services, how that affects Shelburne in those two cases and how each individual school has student services, their own ways to do this, things that are already working that people just aren't sharing or we, we don't know about.
Okay.
I just want to echo that I agree with everything that has been said. Like, I think that plan makes a lot of sense. I do just want to say though, that I think as policies may come up between now and the end of the year, we still have to be thinking about things from the lens of what we're striving for in the end. And I only, I know that there's going to be a different point to discuss this, but in a break Rebecca came to talk to me, just, she wanted to clarify a little bit more about the Black Lives Matter flag and we were just talking about policy. And it's actually when Bonnie took a picture of the two of us talking, but I didn't even know that I was on Facebook and friends saw it. But we were talking and when I was explaining what the, the draft of the policy that was presented to the board was and that there's been, that there's a healthy discussion going on about, will it only pertain that high school, like the high school can raise a flag or if it'll be younger schools? She was, she like just sort of had this, like, well, of course the young, like of course middle school and elementary school students will be able to raise the flag, right? And so then she, she and I just started talking about like it in the frame of equity literacy. And so, you know, I just think that, like, that's just one policy that I know that we're working on right now. So it's just like still striving for the overall goal that we may be getting to, like that we hope to get to, like just having that lens or that frame work in our brain while we're talking about these things is the only thing I would add.
Yeah, I don't think we want to wait for an audit and then next year say, okay, this is our plan for next year. I think we can start moving forward on so many different tracks. Policy, budget, recruitment, et cetera, curriculum, indicators, disaggregation of data. There's no reason we can't start now.
Right, and that's the beauty of committee work.
I'm just, I'm just glad you said that because I, I really appreciate your question, Lynn. But I, I feel like the question is, what are our goals for this coming year? Not, not a single goal and
Yeah, and that's what I, that's what I put out. What, what, what are the goals? What is, that we want to achieve?
And that's such a key question and it's, it's, it's interesting. I mean, at least I find myself a bit, I mean, there are, there are many things and we can be, we can feel somewhat overwhelmed by maybe this list of different things that we want to get done. But my hope too is that we don't spend a year just examining those things. I, I'm going to go out on a limb for a second on something, which is that when it comes to hiring practices, because I don't think this is new. It may be new within our district, but the idea of having a diverse workplace as, as a goal, as a mission, has been in place for many schools and institutions of higher learning and businesses for 30, 40 years or more. And as somebody who's participated both on the admissions side at the university and trying to recruit minority students and also on the faculty side, that's just, I mean, that was, that work was begun 30-plus years ago. And so where I'm out on a limb is that in, at, in, in my school, in our school in Charlotte, one of the things that I've been asking for, for years is that we look at a more diverse workplace. Because, and, and I, and I'm, and, and the thing is, is that if you're a white person, I don't know that these issues are front and center for you every day. But if you're a family or a child of color going into school every day, there's some sense of urgency. So there's real disparity in terms of the experience that people have. And I just think it's not okay that we have kids of color going into, let's say, Charlotte and there's nobody that looks like them. And we have nobody breaking down the doors at central office saying, we got to do something about this, even though that's been asked for. So with, and I know you, I hope you know Elaine, how much I respect you and I respect our principals so much. But there's an element of personal experience too that drives some of these issues. And I don't know if that would all come forward from the principals. I think it would come forward from the students and families affected by these issues, but how do we hear from them? So I'm hoping we don't wait another year.
Yeah, and I wasn't suggesting that we put things on hold. I mean, I could pull up right now the document Lynn has seen it, the document that already says what we're doing. So I could do a presentation right now, right here, without having to do another thing to let you know in Charlotte, in Heinsburg and Williston and Shelburne. And we've discussed it more than
They've all seen it.
And we've, we've been around it more than once and we've talked about it at LEED. So it's not like, nobody's really sitting back. But it's not as easy as just saying, we're going to hire people, we're going to hire minority people. They have to apply. They have to want to come here, having applied. Wow, I wish that there were, I wish that that were something that were like easy to do, but it's not. And I know that my colleagues around the state, it's not easy for anybody.
To me, that's committee work. To me, that's
Right, but I just want to say like, it's not something that we don't, it's not that we don't care about it. It's a, it's a really tough nut to crack.
I think, I think we have to, I, I agree with you. And as you're alluding to the fact that it isn't just about recruitment, it's about retention over time.
That's what I learned this spring when I went to a series of workshops on this. Even in like Baltimore and places that have, it's easier for them to get teachers and they don't stay.
But I think if we, and I agree, but I think if we look to a school like Burlington, for example, where in earnest some years ago, because of the changing demographics within their school system, ident- their school system, identified that they needed to go outside of the, of the general hiring practices that they had in place, and specifically target resources where there are candidate pools, minority candidate pools that can be tapped, and where you're soliciting those folks more directly. And, and I agree, this is not an easy process, and I would not, but I, I think it's, that's why I think that the idea of a, of a diversity coordinator, frankly, somebody who might, and I don't, we'd have to find out if, if we could find this person even, but somebody who has expertise in a number of areas, including staff, hiring and staffing and retention, might be of a real resource to us and would keep this issue like very potent on an ongoing basis.
Okay. I, I think at some point it's going to be helpful for the board to define what, what the goal is. What, and I say that only because I know when we started to look at flag policies, there are some schools that actually have an equity and inclusion statement. And, you know, we talk about, you know, we do have our equity definition to kind of guide us, but if we're going to use these other, if we're going to look at diversity and we're going to look at inclusion, this goes back to what I said at the very beginning, I think it's important that we are all saying the same thing and striving for the same goal. So I, I do think at some point, my, just my opinion, I'm one person, that might be a helpful thing to do.
I'd like to see, as a goal, I'd like to see a gap analysis done for what we have and what we, things we need to accomplish, everything we have to accomplish.
Are you going to say the same thing?
No, I was just going to say, you know, that's the bottom line, we all understand. We have things happening. We'll celebrate what we have, but then we'll also identify the gaps. So with that, maybe after that presentation, then we'll be able to have, you know...
Further discussions.
Further discussion and maybe come up with that goal. But I think having an understanding of where we are at is very critical, because we, we want to feel like proud of what we're doing in the district. And that could even involve what other districts are doing, and maybe already Elaine, as she comes with that, you know, with that presentation, she says, "Hey, we're already able to identify the, this district is doing this and we don't have it." So things like that. And I think we, we just have to hear that and then we'll take it from there.
Hence maybe a half-day retreat in February would be a good time to come back around.
Well, what we could do, and very immediately to move us forward, is charge each of our committees to take this on as a discussion at their next meeting. I'm thinking the HR committee, what I'd like to do is with a small group, have a discussion about recruitment, because this is something that I focus on in another world, but there has to be a recruitment plan, and there have to be specific strategies. So, you know, the HR committee could say, you know, come up, could have a discussion about it, is it something to bring to the rest of the board, some suggestion back to Elaine and see what the feedback is, whatever. But it's clearly an HR issue and we have an HR committee. So let's let them chew on it a little bit and bring something back to the board, whatever that might be. And, you know, the indicator committee, they've heard from the rest of the board that they want disaggregated data based on race, ethnicity, socioeconomic status and so forth. And our budget committee, you know, whatever, I'm sure Brendan has a number of different ideas that he could move forward, but if we could bring it to the smaller committee, let the group of four to five people chew on whatever that is, and have that just be part of a report out to the rest of the board at the following meeting, it would move us forward.
With regards to a gap analysis, which I think absolutely should be done, I just wonder if there's also a way to include, besides just ourselves looking at a gap analysis, somehow including, I don't know if it's, and I don't exactly know what the easy answer is, but like including families of color or people who are, like someone like Rebecca or someone else who's just very knowledgeable in the field, because we may think that we're looking at the analysis and maybe being able to say like, "Oh, we're really strong here," or "we're really struggling here," or "there's like a, there's this to meet." But we also might not be thinking about it as like holistically as maybe someone else with another experience could be, could be pointing out, maybe there's something we're actually doing great, or there's something that we need to be looking at in a different, in a different light.
Anything else for next year?
Absolutely, I do. I'm talking about the left field, but it's not on here, but I want to say it. School security. So we've done some things with school security. I just think it should be a topic for next year.
You want to report to the board on...
I do, just if for any reason, so that, God forbid, like the public knows, like it's, it's on our topic. I'm also curious, and this is something I was going to talk to Brendan about, what portion of our budget now is spent on school security, either side, including like our resource officer and cybersecurity, the things that we've done. I've been listening and reading a lot about school security across the nation, and an inordinate amount of money of school budget is being spent on schools. Even my, my own high school that I was in last weekend for my nephew's graduation, they have six paid resource officers, one on each floor, one in the gym. This is a school with 800 kids. I'm like, I'm always flabbergasted, I'm like, "How are you paying for this? Where's this going?" This is a high school.
In Massachusetts.
In Massachusetts.
How big is that?
And not, and honestly, not an expensive high school, it's a harming high school. It's not like, it is not a top school. So I was just very curious. And then, you know, cybersecurity and all, I'm just a whole bunch of things. And then, and I want into, include in that report our words from our insurance company. Like now that school districts all over the nation are doing X, Y, Z, Q to like harden their schools, and I'm not suggesting we follow any specific policy, so I'm just saying, is there going to come a time where, "Well, this school did this, how come you didn't do that?" Or this school did thi... And so I don't know those answers, and I don't, I just think it should just be a topic we should be talking a little bit about and keeping it on our radar screen.
Can you say a little bit more about the commentary from the insurance provider and what they need?
Sure, specifically like, I remember when they had come in before and they said, "Okay, if someone slips, they get, you know, you're covered for this," or "God forbid, something happens, you're covered for this." Like, I'm wondering specifically how the insurance industry is changing its rates and its expectations, school districts based on other school districts doing different things. And if we are going to be expected to do those things, I don't know, but it's something, there's industry things happening across the nation, I just don't, I'd want to be in front of it and have an understanding versus, "Oh, well, you, you know."
I mean, there's a vast degree of our insurance coverage right now, which covers...
Catastrophic events.
Information security and...
I'm comfortable that we're covered, but I haven't, we haven't gone into it as a board.
And I didn't even mean it from like a specific coverage. I'm comfortable we're covered too. I just meant like going forward, how are these things playing in the industry now?
So schools that maybe have resource officers and metal detectors are being covered at a different rate than...
I was reading about some produnk school in North Carolina that is suddenly like getting the software, and I mean, there's just the things that are happening across the nation, and depending on the region you're in, there's different levels of response, I'd say. But, and again, I'm not advocating for any of this, I'm just saying it's very interesting how much and how quickly this, and I'm looking at it from an analyst perspective, this industry is a growth industry with millions, like billions of dollars being spent in school security. And I just, I think that we should just be aware of it.
I have a question. This is like the rule follower in me coming out. I remember Jeff, or the assignment lover maybe, Jeff mentioned that we should think about what school process we'd want to take a look at next year. So I just wanted to hold up this handy visual and see if, is this a time to vote on this?
Well, I was gonna, I was gonna pose that we look at personalization only because the law says that by 2020, right, we all need to be...
Graduate according to proficiencies.
To proficiencies and have the, the personalization piece. The MTSS piece I thought would be really helpful the following year when Act 173 actually is put into play, because I don't think it makes sense to do that. I think our, some of the processes may change a little bit once 173 goes into effect.
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think they're being, they're always being refined regardless of 173, but yes, I think.
Whenever the board would like us to report on MTSS, we're happy to do that.
Well, I also was thinking there was great interest in hearing about the RISE program, and that would fit into the personalization piece. So it just seemed like maybe some of the, some of the stars were aligning towards that one.
So did we need to pick something, unless the, did we need to pick?
Lynn picked for us.
All right.
With a lot, with a lot...
I picked an assignment out of, out of thin air, something that Jeff said, I was like, "Yes, assignment, thank you." And so I just got it stuck in my head. Lynn's got it covered.
That was the easy one. The rest of it, I figured you guys could do, help me with the tough stuff. I also had, so that's what I had, I kind of kept a list, by the way, Dave's going to keep a list next year for the meetings, as things come up and people want to talk about it later, the never-ending retreat. I had Act 173, RISE, innovation grants, again, and then the equity funding under policy, I had flag and naming rights.
Okay.
What else? Is there anything else?
Reporting out from each of the committees related to their discussions on diversity, equity issues.
Okay, yeah, that's what we got from tonight.
I mean, is that a charge? I mean, to me, that would be like a September or October report out from a first meeting, perhaps?
October.
Yeah. I think in general, just how the committees report out to the rest of the group.
Good point.
The, I, you know, I think that, well, one example is the finance group, we feel that we did a good job updating you guys on the process, the nonstop process, that we implemented something, Gene and I have decided, but we need to bring it to the board still, what we're going to do to hopes to address your guys' concerns. So we're going to have a standardized format that you guys can expect every single time, and we'll get your feedback.
So the dashboard?
There'll be a dashboard and a budget narrative. So if, if every group kind of had a standard way to present out with key things, I think that would be helpful.
And Elaine probably has examples for us too, right? Or we could build on...
What you've already done.
Gene and Brendan have already done.
It's not that we've done a lot of work, so don't get your hopes...
Oh, I know the two of you, I'm sure you've done a lot.
What else?
Lynn, I had, so for that, that sort of longer work plan you're speaking about, that at some point this year we'll address school counselor and student ratios.
Okay, through EQS?
We can put that in with a security discussion, right?
That was hand in hand.
I don't, I just read an article today, nevermind.
Okay.
I digress, I'm sorry.
That's a good starting point.
All right. I think we have enough to start making a long work plan.
I have like three, I have three pages of notes, myself and Sandy's taken notes.
I kid you that we're going to be meeting weekly, but at this point, we're going to be meeting weekly to get it all done. Okay.
Thank you for this discussion, I appreciate it.
Well, I think, I appreciate you guys coming back and giving, giving some space instead of trying to do it all at the end. I know it would have been hard for me to be present at the end of Thursday, so I appreciate that. Okay, and if anything else comes up, or you think of something driving home tonight, just shoot an email. I'm here all summer. 5.0, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Move.
Second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Pose. All right, 6.0, the next meeting date, I'm going to get it right, June 18th, 5:30 here.
Okay.
And it'll be over by 6:00.
Are we meeting until 6:00?
Right?
More sooner.
More sooner.
Depends how long it takes to get a quorum, then it'll be over in five minutes.
Right. We can call, this is, I feel...
These are the ones that we can call.
I have to call in.
Right.
I won't be here by 5:30, I can be here by 5:45.
I'll be here at 5:30.
One thing is that we're just trying to get our hands around actually how much work needs to be done, which I don't think is significant, so it might just be a call-in, but you and I can talk about that next week.
Okay.
Might only be five consent agenda things.
Okay, that you could just all call.
Yeah.
Okay.
Can I just say, I asked Lynn, I thought it was going to be tonight, and I realized it wasn't in the packet. I asked Lynn to include at that meeting the Code of Ethics that the V S B A called in, remember we learned at the training that they've redone that? And I think it's an important thing for people to look at and to agree to as a board. So that's going to be in there, if you take time to read it, it'll be in the consent agenda, I think, right Lynn?
Yep.
So, but just if you would read it ahead of time so that you know what it is that...
It has more teeth in it.
Yeah.
Really?
Yeah. It's not anything, I mean, I'm not, I don't think that there's a single person on this board that wouldn't read that and go, "Of course, of course, of course, of course." But still, there's something about the action of reading it and say, "Yes, I agree and I commit myself to this." But I think it's good practice.
Just articulate it a little bit more.
Okay. Motion to adjourn.
Move.
All right. All those in favor?